And we will go ahead and oh, or nine oh six item and go ahead and open that up. Six point two consideration of update on COVID nineteen. And I do not see Dr. Pace currently on my screen. There he is just popped up. Dr. Pace, good morning.
Good morning. Morning, Mr. Chair Supervisors. Um, thank you for having us once again for the COVID update. Um, so just the quick overview is the cases are continuing to improve and Sarah will talk about that in just a second. We're still in the purple tier and uh, the numbers aren't quite getting us to the red tier yet, but we're getting closer. And the vaccine is continuing to roll out as fast as we get it in, we're, we're sending it on out. So, um, we're getting approximately two thousand doses this week. That will be both for first and second doses. So, you know, just to give an idea where it's more than we have been getting in the past, but we're still, you know, at two thousand a week, we're, we're still many weeks away from getting where we want to be. So maybe Sarah can go ahead and give the update and then I'll come back and um, uh, talk about some of the specific issues.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to give a quick update. Have positive news like Dr. Pace said indicators of reducing transmission at both the state level and in Lake County. And then we're going to review um, about forty of the COVID deaths that we've identified in Lake County to help inform the vaccine strategy and thinking and then um, we'll finish looking at our progress in Lake County. As of yesterday. So testing continues to decline uh, at the state level. Yesterday, about two hundred and forty-four thousand new tests were reported. We continue to see the testing positivity decline. The fourteen day average is two point six percent. This is incredibly positive news. Correspondingly, we see a decline in new cases identified about thirty-five hundred new cases were reported statewide yesterday. This is the lowest we've seen since early October. This is really promising news. Again, um, we continue to track at the state level, the variants and, and there are a couple of concern, but statewide, down to thirty-five hundred new cases is incredibly promising. Statewide, we've identified over fifty-two thousand deaths from COVID. Just a note here, if you're looking at the graph on the right, you see over a thousand deaths reported recently. Most of those were from LA County. They had done a review of deaths and so they didn't all occur on that day. That was a result of a review of deaths of a couple of months prior. Reducing impact in our healthcare system, about fifty-four hundred COVID hospitalized patients were reported yesterday statewide. And about fifteen hundred of those were in the ICU. In Lake County, we've identified fifty-one new cases over the last seven days. This is the lowest number of cases we've seen over a week in a long time. It brings our total to about thirty-one hundred cases total since the beginning of the pandemic. And we've identified there's been one more death in the last seven days. This purple bar here represents the week of February fourteenth through the twentieth. Our near, our new tier assignment will be announced this afternoon by the state. This, like Dr. Pace said, keeps us in the purple tier due to our daily case rate. So our daily case rate for this new time period um, will be eleven per a hundred thousand. It was about fifteen per a hundred thousand last week, so we are continuing to decline and our testing positivity in Lake County is also declining down to four point nine percent to positive signs. And this is a, a busy table, so let me spend a few minutes walking through this and talking about why we looked at the data this way. So a couple of weeks ago, I did an analysis of at the time thirty-nine COVID deaths among Lake County residents. And we know that congregate living settings, which I have abbreviated here as CLS, are, have been high-risk settings throughout the pandemic um, for deaths to COVID. And so in Lake County, we've identified thirteen COVID deaths that were associated with congregate living settings. Twelve of the thirteen of these deaths were people who lived in skilled nursing facilities. And that's why statewide and in Lake County, we prioritized um, that, those populations to receive the first doses of the vaccine. And most of those people were white, non-Hispanic, eighty-five percent were white, non-Hispanic. And most of those people were seventy-five years in age of old and older. Then we looked at deaths that weren't associated with congregate living settings because a different level of risk for exposure and death due to a variety of factors. And at the time, that was twenty-six deaths were associated with what I call community deaths. They weren't associated with congregate living settings. And the reason we did this is now that was we move forward with vaccinations and into different priority populations, wanting to better understand who in Lake County has been most at risk for death to COVID. And so of these community deaths or deaths not associated with the congregate living setting, about fifty-eight percent of people were white, non-Hispanic, about forty-two percent of people were people of color. And you'll see here, the age distribution is different as we'd expect from the deaths in the skilled nursing facility. So about forty-six percent of people were over seventy-five, nineteen percent sixty-five to seventy-four, and about a third, thirty-five percent under sixty-five. So we're going to look a little bit closer at those community deaths as again, we move forward into different priority populations to better understand who those populations are. So here, we're looking at those community deaths, again, deaths not associated with the congregate living setting. And I'm, we're looking by race ethnicity and we're looking by age group. You know, both are risk factors for a variety of reasons. So the majority of community deaths, about fifty-eight percent, were among people who are white, non-Hispanic. And about half of them, fifty-three percent, are seventy-five and older. Thirty-three percent were sixty-five to seventy-four, and two of the deaths were among people or thirteen percent under the age of sixty-five. We have a different age distribution among people of color in Lake County. A little less than half of the deaths were among people of color. Thirty-six percent were over the age of seventy-five, and the majority are about two-thirds were under sixty-five. So what this suggests and I think is important to consider as we look at our vaccine strategy is to ensure that we're reaching the populations most at risk for death and for severe outcomes like hospitalization. Um, and as you know, Dr. Pace has updated you on the priority populations and will continue to do so. I think what we're looking at is as we've opened it up to people sixty-five and older, or we've reached, we've reached, and I'll, I'm about to show you our success in reaching older people, but I think it's really important that we think about this population as well. That's under sixty-five, that has not for the most part been eligible for the vaccine unless they've been in a particular occupation or employment group, and that this is an important group to target in terms of first doses for vaccine. So here's the update on our numbers. About ninety-three hundred residents have received one dose. This is about eighteen percent of the adult population. This is up about nine hundred doses since I last reported these on Thursday morning. And then about forty-two hundred residents, about forty-five percent of people who've received their first dose have received both doses. So this is about eight percent of the adult population, and this is up about twelve hundred cents Thursday morning. And so total doses administered, um, as of last night, about thirteen thousand five hundred doses administered to Lake County residents. I think really important to, to um, to know and to remember as we look at these data moving forward, at least for now, they don't include data or um, vaccines administered through Indian Health Service, the V, or the VA. And so when we look at our data particularly by, and the reason for that is those are on different data systems. There is talk about integration of those systems. But at this moment, it does not include those doses, so it's important to remember that. Particularly when we look at some of the demographics of who have been vaccinated. So here, um, as of last night, um, fifty percent of Lake County residents over seventy-five and older have had their first dose. So just to walk through this table, that's about two thousand six hundred and forty-five people. We estimate that there's about fifty-three hundred people in this age group in Lake County, which makes fifty percent of the population has received their first dose. About forty percent of people sixty-five to seventy-four have received their first dose. Eight percent fifty-five to sixty-four, eleven percent forty-five to fifty-four. So we'll continue to track this over time and I, we'll see this shift as we have different priority groups, whether by age or occupational status. And then here we're looking at the race ethnicity of people who've received their first dose in Lake County. So sixteen percent of white, non-Hispanic residents and eight percent of Latino residents have received their first dose. So a couple of things that I think are really important to note here. First, in a large part, these data like in other counties reflect the groups that were prioritized through the state guidelines. And as we move through the priority populations, I think we'll, we'll see this shift. But to date, we see that about seventy-two hundred white, non-Hispanic residents have been, have received their first dose out of about forty-four thousand people, or about sixteen percent of that population for Latinos. We see about eleven hundred people have been vaccinated out of about fourteen thousand two hundred in that population for about eight percent. Here, it's really important to note, again, these data are completely limited, but that they're not integrated with Indian Health Service data. So I think this is a dramatic undercount of Native Americans in the community that have been vaccinated. And um, then I'll say for the other racial ethnic groups here, people who identify as other races or multiracial, about sixteen percent have been vaccinated, ten percent among black, Asian, black residents, twenty-six percent among Asians, and eighty-one percent around Native Hawaiian. So for these, these racial ethnic groups where there are smaller populations in the county, the population estimates, these come from the US Census Bureau, the American Community Survey. And there are large margins of errors for these populations as these populations get smaller. So these denominators, these population estimates, a little less reliable, but I still think really important to, to report on progress among all racial ethnic groups. And that is all I have, I believe, for today. And we'll continue to update on our progress. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. So I think there's a couple of things I want to just emphasize after with what she said, and then I'll go into talking about the variants and the vaccine. So one is, is that um, we have been incorrect about the way we've been reporting the number of cases we need to have to go to move into the red tier. We were to move from the purple to the red tier, it needs to be over forty-two cases, but to move from, I'm sorry, to move, yeah, from the purple. Well, this is the confusing part.
Yeah, so what the California Department of Public Health did for small counties, recognizing that just a few cases can dramatically impact our daily case rate, is that if we were in the red tier, they allowed us to have up to forty-three cases per week to stay in the red tier. And that's actually about ten, a daily case rate of about ten per a hundred thousand. But they are holding the line currently to move into the red tier. They're holding the line that we need seven per a hundred thousand, which is about thirty-one cases per week. So I'll repeat that because I think it's a little confusing. So currently to move into the red tier, CDPH is requiring that we have no more than thirty-one cases per week. And then there's some wiggle room to stay in it up to forty-three, but we had previously reported forty-three as the goal. And really, that's how you stay in the red tier. I hope that was.
Right, thanks. So, so the point of this is, is that we were saying forty-two would get us into the red tier before, but it's actually about thirty-one. The state, I believe the governor's going to come out later today and he's changing that framework. I think it's going to be based on, uh, I don't know exactly what he's going to say, but I think it's going to be that once you get a certain number of people vaccinated in the county, that they're going to loosen it up and it may come back to about the ten per a hundred thousand, but it's, so it's a moving target. Things are changing all the time and uh, but where we are at this moment right now is we need to get to about thirty cases per week to move into the red tier. There's two uh, data points that are important. One is the positivity rate and we are at the proper positivity rate for the red tier. The second is the case rate and we're improving. We continue to move down, but it's going to uh, be a little further than we thought. And we have to be in there for two weeks before we can actually switch to the red tier and open up indoor dining and some of that stuff. So that's one thing I wanted to emphasize. A second is, is um, what Sarah's talking about with tribal health is, is kind of significant because tribal health has gotten a lot of vaccine and they've been very out there in terms of getting people vaccinated. So they vaccinated something like a thousand people now. And we're not getting credit for that in terms of the county numbers because it's going through a different pathway. They're working on it and trying to get that, that sort of lined up, but at this point, we're probably about a thousand people, somewhere around there, less than what we actually are in the county. So our numbers are actually better than what we're reporting there. The uh, there's uh, some interesting data about the schools. So a lot of times people are asking how many people are declining the vaccine that are offered it? So how many people in the healthcare world or in the education world or just in the, in the community at large? You can see that about fifty percent of the seventy-five and older folks have been vaccinated now, but are the, are the, are there other fifty percent declining? Or they just haven't been able to get it together to be in there, or it's too many obstacles, or they're homebound, or what's going on? With the schools, we um, there's something like thirteen hundred, fourteen hundred teachers and staff in the schools, in the K through twelve in Lake County, and about a thousand of them were interested in getting it and signed up for it. So you know, that's something like, you know, about, I don't know, seventy-five percent or, or more that, that, I don't know that they all actually completed it, but they, they were interested and signed up for it and so we were prepared to do that. So that's a, that's a round number of what one portion of the population was uh, was doing. And you know, I think it's usually somewhere between about fifty and eighty percent. We, I saw an article come out the other day about the military and in the military, because I think people are younger and healthier and I'm not sure what all the reasons are, but it was a little under fifty percent of the people that were going ahead and getting the COVID vaccine. So it's probably somewhere between fifty and eighty percent of the population is going ahead with it. Well, one of the things we're seeing with this vaccine hesitancy is, is that people are often kind of holding back, watching their friends and family get it, and then if things go okay, then two, three, four weeks later, they're interested in getting it. I would encourage people not to take that strategy just because, you know, it's, the, the infection is still out there, so people are still getting sick. The uh, yeah, the, the last piece of this, just to comment on Sarah's pieces was um, the Latino population is about eight percent uh, has been vaccinated. The, in the community, it's about twenty percent of the population, so we would like to at least see it at that. And in terms of the impact of COVID, it's something like forty percent of the cases are Latino. So we're at about a quarter of where we'd like to be in terms of just that health equity kind of measure. So um, yeah, so I, I wanted to just move on from that, but just to comment on those things. So one of the things is the variants. There's a, there's a fair amount of, of uh, media play about the variants now. And um, I think it's just worth it to get an update. We are, there's currently these three variants of concern that the CDC has called out. These are the most worrisome ones where there's pretty clear evidence that it's more contagious and probably more dangerous. And that's the South African variant, the UK variant, and the Brazilian variant. The Brazilian variant has not been found in California yet, but the other two have. And uh, we have not identified them in Lake County, but there's not a whole lot of testing going on in Lake County. The state kind of controls the genomic sequencing. And um, unless we have a specific concern like somebody's gotten reinfected or something like that, we really can't get the genomic sequencing only. But they're doing kind of random testing, but they, at, at this point, I'm not aware of any of those being picked up in Lake County. But both of them are in the Bay Area. The, the South African and the UK one have been identified in the Bay Area. So uh, the one that we are seeing around California a lot is called the B fourteen twenty-seven or B fourteen twenty-nine or they call it the California variant as well. This is now making up approximately half the cases in the Bay Area and in Southern California. That's, so they're still considering it a, a variant of interest, which is a lower level of concern. They have not clearly identified that it's more contagious or more dangerous. I just was on a call this morning where the latest information is they just did a fairly big study in the Bay Area and they felt that it may be slightly more contagious, but they were actually somewhat reassured after this study. So that's the first good news I've heard about this one yet, but just so that people are aware this is out there. The uh, the same approaches are what we're recommending, masking, maybe double masking, uh, social distancing, avoiding large gatherings, especially indoors, and getting vaccinated. The vaccine, this vaccine, there doesn't seem to be any indication that this vaccine is not working against the California variant. And um, they're uh, and even, even in the cases where there's some problems with the vaccine, completely preventing infection from the variants, there's at least partial immunity. And so it's, it's, there's, from all evidence at this point, it's definitely worth getting the vaccine as soon as possible and preventing the spread. So um, moving on to the vaccine, uh, like Supervisor Sabate was mentioning, there's a lot of changes going on at the state level. It's really, really moving fast. This is going to be a very chaotic month, I think, with a lot of these changes, and then I think things will settle down. They're moving to um, what they're calling a third-party administrator, a TPA. So they're, basically the state is going to kind of take over, I mean, not the state, but this private entity, Blue Shield, is going to take over all the um, the inventory and all the tiers and all the data and the appointments and everything. It's not clear exactly whether we're going to get staffing or other kinds of support. That's all still being worked out. Denise Pomeroy is going to be the county representative, really working with the state, uh, TPA kind of negotiations around the contract and everything. So she's going to be the, the point person for all that. But basically what's starting to happen is the state's trying to standardize across the state and trying to get to where they could really move this through in a coordinated kind of consistent way with feedback and where they understand what's going on because it's kind of chaotic with fifty-eight counties and all the different possibilities. But it makes it harder for a small county like us because we kind of have to fight a little bit harder to make sure that our interests are, are being uh, well represented. One of the big changes that's going to be happening is this change to a new appointment uh, mechanism and a new software platform. They're calling it My Turn. This is the one we tried a couple of weeks ago. It didn't work very well, and so we shut it back down, but we're, it's, we're going to have to go on it. It's mandated. Other counties are now on it. It seems to be working a little bit better. But uh, one of the things that they've kind of agreed to is that we're going to be able to prevent out of county re, and people who don't live or work in the county, we're going to be able to keep them out of the vaccine sites at least through March. After that, it looks like we're going to have to just let everybody in, but at least for the next couple of weeks, it looks like they've kind of been willing to compromise with us and let us do that. So at least we can focus on getting people in as there's still a limited supply of vaccine. I think the supply of vaccine is going to gradually improve over the coming weeks now. We are the uh, the, this My Turn site is going to be better in terms of functionality, I think, when it finally settles down. It's going to be, you know, any of these things when they roll them out, it's very bumpy for the first couple of weeks. But eventually, you know, a lot of the problems people have been having getting appointments or connecting with us about follow-up appointments and things like that. These are all because we're having to work around these clunky old systems and just trying to put people in place to try to plug the holes. And when there's a lot of folks calling and different needs, it's hard to do that. What's going to happen is we're going to kind of shift to a more automated mode. So you're going to have to go online and do it the state's way. We're not going to be able to do all these other kind of special things. They are going to have a phone line where people can call in and they get help doing it. But one of the things that they're, they seem to be requiring is an email and a phone number. So we haven't really worked out what that's going to be for people that don't have emails because they're trying to um, double verify people's identity. And so you have to have a cell phone and a, and the email address to be able to do it online, and that's going to be a problem. So these are the kind of things we're just going to be fighting with them about over the coming weeks. And uh, I just encourage people to be patient. I think in the long run, probably by May, it's going to be pretty good. But for the next couple of months, it's going to be kind of bumpy and a little bit problematic. We're basically just having to do workarounds all the time for all these things and those are going to disappear. But the value of a workaround is it makes it work better for people, but when they're gone, they're gone, and then you just have to deal with the system the way it is. So the, another part of what's going to happen with this uh, state takeover is the um, the phases and who's, who's in priority is going to be standardized across the state. So we've kind of been trying to uh, focus on the most vulnerable folks in our county and trying to get those to the front of the line first because there's been so limited vaccine. We, as of yesterday, we are no longer able to do that. So at this point, starting yesterday, a press release, a couple of press releases went out about this, but in case people didn't see all that, we are now, the state guidelines are what we're adhering to. So if you qualify under the state guidelines, you can, you qualify for a vaccine in Lake County. Whereas before, we were trying to sort of tailor it and just make sure that we got the most vulnerable folks first. So that's over now. So at this point, anybody who was in phase one A, which is mainly the healthcare workers, educators, including childcare workers, preschool and college, which we had not allowed to do, they're all eligible at this point. Emergency service workers, including food and food service and ag workers are all eligible now. And um, so they can, any of those folks can sign up on the, the links on the website. And if you can get an appointment, then come in. If, if you need to bring some kind of uh, documentation of your status. So if you're sixty-five or older, you need to bring an ID with, with a birth date. If you're a food service worker, you need to be, you're bringing your work badge and a, and a picture ID. If you're a farm worker, you need to have some kind of ID. So these are how we're going to do it, but we're not saying you can't do it if you're eligible on the state level. Starting on March fifteenth, there's going to be a big change. That's when the state says that people with chronic medical conditions will be eligible. They have a long list of certain conditions that make you eligible, and so you'll need to go on the website. I'm pretty sure it was in the press release last week too, but um, where they described that if that's your situation, if that's how you're going to qualify, you need to get a, a note from your doctor for your medical provider that says, yes, so-and-so qualifies for the vaccine under the current state guidelines. You don't need to get them to write down what your qualification is. We don't care about that. It's up to your medical provider, but um, that's how we're going to kind of verify people at the front gate. Don't make our, you know, poor screeners at the front gate when there's dozens of cars waiting have to determine whether your medical condition qualifies or not. You need to get some documentation from your medical provider. If you don't have a medical provider in the county or you can't get that kind of letter, you need to write into the MOOC line and I'll, I'll review these and make a list and we'll put it up front. So I'll, I'll have to make some kind of determination about that because we don't want people to be excluded that don't have a medical provider. But we need to have some kind of verification because otherwise people sort of scam the system a little bit. So the second appointments have been a problem. The follow-up appointments where with the Moderna, it's four weeks after, have been a bit of an issue. And we apologize for that. Partly what happened is we thought we were going to be able to make those appointments at the first visit. But then, you know, we've changed the sites, we've changed the days, we've, everything's kind of moved around. We've been calling people, but oftentimes it's, you know, within a day or two of the time. And if we don't get in touch with them, people are getting frustrated. So what we're doing now is we are opening, we're putting the links on the webpage. So one, one thing, the first, I think the first important thing is, is if you got the Moderna vaccine, the recommended time is four to six weeks after the first dose. So we were shooting for four weeks after, twenty-eight days after, but you still have two more weeks. There's no problems. You don't need to worry that there's any kind of the spoilage or lack of effect or anything like that. And it's almost for sure, it can go on much longer than two weeks after, but that's what the current recommendation is. So between four to six weeks is when we're targeting. If you, you should be getting a call or an email from us. If that doesn't happen, you can uh, call or email to the MOOC line and um, that's the best way to do it. Just leave a message with your name, the date you got your vaccine and some contact information and we'll get back to you. But the quickest, the most direct way is just to go on, get the links. But the quickest, the most direct way is just to go on, get the links on the webpage and uh, sign up for it. You don't need to talk to anybody and then we'll just come in. We you will have to have your your initial card, the card from your first vaccine to come in. Because we don't want people scamming the system by coming in on the second second appointment website. So you gotta have your card, your first, the card from your first shot when you come in and do it. But that's the easiest way. If you can't get in that way and you haven't gotten a call and you need to be called, uh, email us or call us at the MOOC line. Um. So the new, there's a new vaccine that just got approved last Friday, the Johnson and Johnson, they're also calling it the Jansen. It's um, it's a one-shot vaccine. It seems to be pretty much as effective. The current thinking is that any of the three vaccines that are available are equivalent in impact. And people should just get whatever one they can. Depending on what we get delivered, either the Pfizer or Moderna at this point, that's what you get. You don't get a choice. So on the on a given day, if it's Pfizer, you get Pfizer. On the next day, if it's Moderna, you get Moderna, and then for the second dose, you have to get the same one you got the first time. But people are kind of wanting to choose, pick and choose. From a medical point of view, there doesn't seem to be any advantage or disadvantage over them. Uh, the only difference is gonna be this new one, the Johnson and Johnson is only gonna be one dose, and maybe it's a little bit less effective. But at this point, there's no indication that that's that's gonna make any real difference in the real world. Um, we don't have any of that yet. They're supposedly gonna start shipping some to California later this week. I think the state's gonna give specific guidance about who we should be giving it to. Most likely, it's gonna be people that are hard to get to a second time, you know, farm workers or people that are more migratory, homeless folks, things like that. But uh, we don't have that guidance yet. Um. So the vaccine sites are going well. There's two days a week in Lakeport at the Drive-In Theater, two days a week at Red Bud Park in Clear Lake. Uh, you know, we're getting somewhere between four hundred and eight hundred to a thousand people a day through there between first and second doses. It's a, it's quite an operation. There's a a lot of people going through. Some days it goes really smooth. Friday, we had the tents blow over and we had to stop everything while we were reworking everything for about forty-five minutes. So there was a a big holdup on there, but you know, all in all, we've got a an incredible group of people that are working on this. You know, just to give a a, just a sense of what's going on, there's like basically twenty-five to thirty people out there. Four days a week, six to eight hours a day. So it's pretty much, there's thirty people doing a full-time job to set up these vaccine sites. These are people that, you know, they're either health department staff, which have been, you know, completely overworked for a year now. Or folks from other departments around the county, you know, probation's been a big help, social services has been a big help. We've had a lot of help from other other agencies around the county, from the local, uh, the the city law enforcement and things. And then there's all these retired nurses, retired docs, student nurses, you know, all kinds of volunteers coming out to help. You know, we've been very, very fortunate for this, and when you go out there, just kind of recognize there's like a whole team of people. Working basically a full-time job to provide this vaccine site for the community in addition to their other jobs and everything. We we're now starting to hire temp people and we're starting to try to do other things, but it's it's quite a, quite a coordinated effort. And uh, you know, our public health nursing staff and our emergency services staff and the the other folks have been really, really stepping up for this. And so really appreciate that. Um, the uh, and it looks like these are gonna be the models that we're gonna use going forward. Now, even when the state comes in, I think what they're gonna do is just sort of work with us around the current model. So uh, my thinking is, and you know, we'll see, they they get the final say. But is that we're just gonna keep moving forward like this, providing at this kind of level. And be expanding and contracting depending on need and vaccine availability. Southern Adventists are also providing vaccine and doing a great job. Uh, Lakeview Clinic's doing some, uh, Tribal Health is doing some, Safeway's doing some, North Lake Pharmacy is doing some. And so with the new uh, arrangements going on with the state. They're gonna, the ones that wanna continue moving forward are gonna have to do some more direct involvement with the state. They're not gonna be coming through us. So I think that's gonna change over the coming month, but uh, it's gonna get more complicated basically to be a provider in the community for this. So, you know, I think that's the general overview of the vaccine. There's just a couple more things I wanna say and then I'll stop. I'm sorry this is going on so long. But um, the tiers, like I said, like I mentioned earlier, I think the governor's coming out today to make some adjustments to the tier system. That's gonna incorporate vaccine, um, how much of the population is vaccinated? And when more of the population is vaccinated, they'll uh, relax some of the restrictions. Uh, one of the things to just for people to be aware of is that, you know, I might have mentioned this last week. But in the nursing homes, the um, uh, everybody has gotten vaccinated. Now, all the residents and over half the staff have gotten vaccinated, and since that's happened, there have been no new cases in the nursing homes. So you saw in the earlier death data that a third of all the deaths in the county have been in the nursing homes. And you know, it was kind of a nightmare this fall with what was going on there, with just those, the staff were scrambling to keep on top of things. The um, you know, pe- patients couldn't visit their family, they couldn't do any activities, and now since they've been vaccinated, there's been no new cases. And so they're starting to loosen up on the on the visitation, on the activities, things are starting to loosen up quite a bit. And I think that's really uh, kind of a uh. Uh, view into what may be coming in the coming months if we get enough of the population vaccinated here. So folks that are reluctant or kind of holding back, the sooner you can get vaccinated, the sooner we can get this to you. We can get more and more folks vaccinated, the better off it's gonna be. Um, I did wanna mention a little bit about schools because they're, it's so important um, for our society. Basically, um, Brock wasn't able to be in here today because I was gonna ask him to do it. But basically, the schools are starting to move forward to opening with hybrid models. There's a couple of the school districts that have um, been open, were open all last fall and have been, have reopened a couple of weeks ago. And seem to be doing fine. Then the other school districts in terms of the kindergartens, uh, I'm sorry, K through six. Are opening up now i- in a hybrid model, and the ones that haven't done it yet are gonna be doing it next week, I believe. Uh, the middle schools and the high schools are waiting until we get into the red tier, and then they will be able to do the same thing. And I think they're all prepared to do it once we are are into the red tier. So all in all, you know, we are moving forward with the schools. Um, and but it's been a huge impact on the on the county. And uh, I really am sad about what's happened here for the kids over the last year. So just in terms of um, of uh, kind of the conclusions here, with the vaccines moving, the state's changing a lot. We're, you know, it's gonna be a very much a moving target, and once you figure out how to do something, it's gonna change in the coming weeks. I'm I'm sorry about that. We don't really have a whole lot of control about it. With the weather improving and the the vaccination rates improving and the and the case rates dropping. I think we're gonna be moving better, more into normalcy. People can be outside doing things more. And I think we're we're through the worst now. The the variants do have a, raise a question mark in that. But I think the general consensus by the experts is is that things should gradually improve, maybe not as fast as they would have without the variants. But some, there's a few experts kind of predicting future surges, but at this point, we're not really seeing that. I think in the coming weeks, the data will will help us see that. So the schools are getting better and, you know, we're just kind of hopefully moving into a a better time now, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pace, for your very in-depth report. I saw that Supervisor Crandall had his hand up during that report, so I'll start with you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Dr. Pace, I just wanted to touch base, uh, um, cause you've given us numbers on on the county's vaccinations. And wanted to see if I can collaborate, uh, and get the numbers from Tribal Health or something like. Is there, is there something hindering that from them communicating that or with you or, um, not sure?
So uh, it's not about, you know, Tribal Health has been a very good partner, and so they're communicating well. The um, um, the issue is, is the downloading into the state data system.
Okay.
And so, uh, Ernesto, I just talked to him yesterday, and he said, you know, that their their IT people are working on it, trying to get it in. But it's a, it's really, uh, you know, IT kind of question of. Because they're getting their vaccine through a different pipeline through IHS. We're getting, the state has a certain way that they wanna do it, and they're not very flexible. But, you know, since they're getting their vaccine through IHS, through the federal government, they don't have to kind of report the same way. And so it's just, it's sort of like uh, talking two different languages, you know?
I understand. It's just, uh, cause it would, I know that they serve not just the native community, they serve whoever is a. Um, patient at the Tribal Health, and I've I've been there because I take my mother quite frequently. And uh, I see a lot of folks that are are getting vaccinations, and so I know those numbers would help towards, you know. We you mentioned that if we are, the more the people in the county are vaccinated, the more we can go ahead and start moving forward to a different uh, lessening restrictions. And so I just, you know, I wanna do what I can to help facilitate that if possible. So if there's anything I can do to figure out how to get pressure or get information from IHS, I can, you know, be a part of that.
Well, I think it's a really important point because when we get, when the governor comes out today, when he starts talking about, um. I think it's gonna be a percentage of the population vaccinated. It'll, this data will make a huge difference because it may make the difference between pushing us over the line where we could. Uh, open up or not, so, but it's not gonna count. They're not gonna count it if it's not in the state system. So, yeah, if you have some um, ability to encourage them to move that along, that's probably a good idea.
I don't think I do, but I'll do my best.
Okay, anybody uh, from the board have any questions or comments for Dr. Pace?
No, I just wanted to add on with EJ there. EJ, I think uh, we have a call. I think we do have a path to at least get this message up to uh, the governor's office. So I'll reach out to you, EJ, and uh, Dr. Pace, and we'll see if we can get something set up this week to talk about those numbers. Uh, being reported at the state level from IHS. So uh, I think I have an idea and um, I'll coordinate with that. Uh, I did wanna just say that, uh, you know, a- as EJ said, I know they're doing uh, both native and non-native, uh, you know. At the uh, Tribal Health Clinic, but I just wanna, you know, as always, uh, Dr. Pace talks about it every week. The volunteers uh, that have been working tirelessly, all of our public health department and everything. I just want to say how greatly appreciative I am, and I know the community is for everybody's been able to get vaccinated at this point. Even though it's frustrating, we do have people getting it done and working through that process. So at this point, that that's my comment for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Piscott?
So I I really appreciate this thorough presentation, and you, your team has been working so hard. And volunteers that have been assisting with the vaccinations. I um, my question is about the Equity Committee. Are we not gonna need that any longer if we're going strictly to the state guidelines? And if that's the case, then um, you know, what would be the process for the people that call us lobbying? Or, you know, have want to um. Wanna have their position heard? So will we not have any local control on that any longer?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I should have mentioned that. So that they're they're calling it the Ethics Committee, the Vaccine Ethics Committee. Um, the Ethics Committee has been meeting weekly. They meet again today. Um, last week, the recommendations were pretty much unchanged from the week before because we hadn't had any vaccine. Because of the the weather uh, interruptions with the supply. So um, people are writing into the MOOC line and we're sending it over. So they will bring up those uh, concerns that were have been brought up during the last week again. Um, I think that's a question in my mind, uh, how, whether they're gonna wanna keep meeting. Uh, with this new kind of focus from the state. I think, you know, um, so I don't know. They're they'll they'll meet today, and I'm sure that'll be part of the discussion. I think at this point, what I would encourage people to do is keep writing into the MOOC line. So if you get something and you um, uh, think it's appropriate to go that way, send it to me or send it to the MOOC line. And we'll have it go into them, you know, I don't know exactly wh- wh- what the role of this committee should be. Because where it got started was to work with helping us navigate on the local level. And now we have a lot less control over that now, and we'll have even less. By the end of the month, it's gonna be basically when the when the switch flips on, people can uh, come in from out of county and all kinds of things. So I don't, you know, I don't really, I don't know, you know, so, but I I'm sure that, I'm glad you brought that up, and that's been in my mind. To to kind of uh, encourage that conversation today in the group. And uh, but I would say right now, for people that have concerns or have um, some uh, opinions they wanna voice. To send that into you or to me or to the MOOC line, and we'll get it to the committee.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Scott?
Um, no real question today, just thank you, Dr. Pace, for your um, your update, and thank you for doing this twice a week. It's really helped the public become informed of what's going on. Um, I just think they feel more comfortable. And then going back to um, our vaccination numbers, I I think it's incredibly important that we have all those numbers. So if that's something that we need to bring back to the board, um, as a letter to the governor. That, you know, even though the numbers from Tribal Health are not being included in our Calif- in our numbers because they don't, the systems don't work. Um, he needs to figure out a way that those numbers are included. So um, uh, Supervisor Crandall and Simon, if you're unable to, you know, get that through the your avenues. Please, let's bring it back to the board and let's make the governor aware that these are high numbers for us when we have such a low population. So we need to make sure that those are being counted.
Thank you, Supervisor. And just to finish uh, the statement you just made, yes, we have a low population for a county. But we have a high population of Native Americans in comparison to other areas as well. A high population of veterans per capita compared to other counties. So we need to make sure those numbers are counted for because they're they're such a major part of our population here. Um, thank you for all those comments and questions. Again, Dr. Pace, thank you for your uh, presentation as well as Sarah. Uh, I appreciate the data that was presented, uh, to kind of get a review and and a look at why we're doing what we're doing. And why we're uh, prioritizing certain groups over others. Granted, it's not completely different than what the state has offered. But at least we're uh, providing some data to uh, to the reasons why we're doing what we're doing. And I think it's important to always have data to support the actions that we take. I'm wondering if it's possible um, to continue getting an updated view of that percentage of um. Every ethnic group and percentage of populations that are receiving the vaccine, just to see how that's moving along. Uh, if that's possible in the upcoming uh, we- weekly reports that you provide to the board. And if possible, uh, we got a percentage of the that specific group of how much of them were vaccinated. Can we also get the percentage when compared to um, their actual population count? So let's say, for example, African-Americans are about four percent of our population. What percentage of that four percent has actually received the um, uh, the dosages? Just to kind of get an idea and a glimpse of more of that equity, uh, and and how that's working out. And granted, it may not change the deployment, but at least it can provide us with a a glimpse of how good we're actually doing. When it comes to the equity and and I said this to the state yesterday, I don't think there's anybody with any mal-intent. Uh, but equity is a huge problem across the board, and I think it's just the system that we have and the processes that we've been through. Um, the uh, the CLS, the Congregate Living uh, Situation. I'm sure that's not what S stands for, but um, that that, those are mainly uh, people who are white. And so that's why it would seem that we're vaccinating white people more than uh, people of color. Or same thing with healthcare providers. Uh, and so the way that we started, it skews and looks like a very uh, unequitable process in how it is that we're deploying it. But I will say, I was on the phone with the state yesterday, uh, and I gave him a an earful. That based on the data that I've collected from CDPH, the poorest counties are some of the lowest. In the uh, vaccination rates, and the wealthy counties are some of the highest. And yet, when you also look at deaths to cases, so the ratio of death rates in each county. And when you look at the case rate based on cases to actual population for each county. Those with the highest case rates and those with the highest death rates are also some of the lowest vaccinated counties in the state of California. Something's wrong with that. Um, and and it's it's one thing to know it, but it's a different thing to take action to change it. And I feel that uh, some of these things are so deeply embedded in our systems, uh, that they are difficult to change. And again, there's no mal-intent in in anything that's happening, but it it just, it. It reveals the problems that we have, uh, that are greater than just COVID nineteen. And I think those are important things to make sure that we pay attention to, uh, so that as we have the opportunity to make systemic changes. Uh, that we make those changes happen so that that's not the way that things happen again if we find ourselves in a similar, parallel type of situation in the future. Um, it's really sad that Indian health and uh, our veteran systems do not communicate together, let alone communicate. Um, it's really sad that Indian health and our veteran systems do not communicate together, let alone communicate with our overall. Uh, cares system that we're using for um keeping track of the uh vaccine. It just seems that that would have been something important that they kept a track of. Um, and also you talked of the my turn coming from the state, just on my phone call with the state yesterday. Uh, Kings County, which is one of the uh highest populations for agricultural Latino populations. Has one of the lowest levels of uh vaccination rates. And yet, the majority of their vaccine appointments are going to neighboring counties from people coming in. So they're still having problems with specific tailoring of you get this many vaccines based on your populations. And then other populations coming in and getting the vaccine. And I just that that I hope that we can continue to apply that we need to check IDs. And if you're not from Lake County or you don't work here in Lake County based on the way that we're working the system. Uh, that sorry, but this is this is not the way it's going to work. So when it comes to Blue Shield. I hope that they collaborate and not just come in and take over. And I hope that they can keep reporting to us rather than just directly reporting back to the state. They are here in our community. Uh, they should be reporting to us. Um, and and letting us know what their actions are here. It just uh. I I'm concerned of how this is all going to work out. Um, you said something about um nineteen hundred. I just wanted to check your numbers here. You said about nineteen hundred educators or people staff working in education? Is that the correct number nineteen hundred?
No, I said thirteen to fourteen hundred.
Okay, okay. So I was wrong in hearing that. Okay, so uh that percentage looks good. And I know that it's high across the board for educational staff throughout the state. It's the other sectors of the economy where it's not necessarily always that high. Um, let me see, going through my stuff here. Uh, can you provide two pieces of information if you have it? Uh, number one, how does somebody get an appointment? Where do they go? What website and what phone number in case they don't have access to the internet?
Okay, uh, yeah, that's um so the um. The best way to do it, the most efficient way to do it is to go to our website, the the Health Department website, Lake County Health Department. And on there will be links. So if it's for a first appointment. You go on and get on the link uh there and and sign up. If it's a second appointment, it's a different link. Um, a press release went out yesterday morning or yesterday afternoon. And it also went out uh la- end of last week with all the specifics on there so people can look those up. But um if uh basically. The way this work, the way it's designed to work is on an internet-based um. Appointment platform, on online appointment scheduling, which is a drag for people that don't have computers or don't have good internet access. Or are older or, you know, English isn't their first language and they're not good with the computer. All those things can be an obstacle and there's a lot of those obstacles in Lake County. So we do have um some phone lines you can use, especially so kind of the way we've done it. And again, this is all in the press release, but the way we've sort of set it up right now is the general information line is two-on-one. So you can get general information there, but they're not going to set you up an appointment. If you need help with an appointment, setting up an appointment because you don't have good internet access or you can't navigate it. If you're a senior, you can call this number nine-nine-three-four-six-four-four. And they have like five or six people working on the lines. If you can't get through, it sounds like there's been a lot of trouble getting through. People ought to leave a message because they do call back everybody who calls and tries to work with them later on, you know, by the end of the day. There it's the a lot of the folks at Social Services, they've been a huge help and they've been making hundreds of calls for us to do this. Um, if you're a farm worker, so we have a special farm worker line sort of. Or a Latino, you know, bilingual, bicultural line where this is through the folks that at Lake County Office of Education that are helping us. And those, there's a couple of different numbers, two-six-two-four-one-six-two, two-six-two-four-one-five-three, two-six-two-four-one-five-nine. So those are, they're going to have staff there specifically to work on it on Fridays. But if people call at other times during the week, I think they'll get a call back too. But so those are ways to navigate in if you're from those specific groups. But if you need to get in and you're not, it's not working, call our MOOC line and it it will get you through. So if you can't get through to somebody, leave a message or email us and we will get back to you. We're we're very interested in reaching back. I think there's been some problems. We've had some kind of internal problems with communication. So I think people have called the nine-nine-three number and they get sent to the MOOC line. The MOOC line sends them back. So I think people have had that very, very frustrating experience of either not getting a person. Or you get a person and they send you someplace else and you can't get through. I think we've streamlined that. And but one of the big things you can do is is if you're able to navigate online, just go to the link and deal with that. That's the quickest and easiest way to do it. If you can't get an appointment, if there's no appointments, that's because we don't have. We don't know how much vaccine we're going to have next week, so we can't open the appointments up until we get that together. So we we're only working just a couple of days at a time because we don't know how much vaccine we're going to have next time to basically how many appointments to have. We don't want to make appointments for people that can't get in because we don't have vaccine. Um, this is all going to completely change. Once we go to my turn, all these will be eliminated. And uh they're gonna, you're gonna just go online and do it their way. And if that doesn't work, you can try to call them. But it sounds like it's going to be more frustrating when you go to the my turn. I know people have had problems with this setup, but we're a lot more high-touch, more willing to work with you here. With our local folks than they're going to be with my turn, but that's where it's going.
Appreciate the level of detail. And the reason I was asking that is I see from time to time that we have some open appointments left over. Uh, and that public health is putting out messages to the public, hey, we have open appointments, please make an appointment. So I want to make sure everybody's aware of all of those possible links. Uh, another question I have for you, and I spoke to you about this over the past week, is I'm concerned, oh, I'm not concerned. But I'd love to see uh more of our pharmacies sign on to start receiving the vaccine. So they can start putting vaccines in arms. I don't see a pharmacy in South Lake. I don't see a pharmacy in the North Shore. I see a lot throughout Lakeport area and then Adventist Health and then that's it. Um, so what is the process that a pharmacy, they have to sign up before they contact you, I believe is the process? Can you maybe describe it so that those who own pharmacies or us, we can provide that information to our pharmacies? Uh, so we can try to get um more localized vaccination sites for those that don't have something very close by.
Yeah, well, that would be ideal. So that's a great way to get your flu vaccine is to go to the pharmacies. We reached out, my understanding was we reached out to all the pharmacies in the area to see who was interested. And we didn't, you know, I mean, it's a pretty big lift and uh uh we didn't get a whole lot of uptake at the time. Now, I think there's more interest. The problem is with the state taking over this this thing. There, there's a lot more requirements. Before, we would just get the vaccine and share it with the pharmacy and, you know, kind of work it out. That's that's being eliminated. So there, everybody who's going to do it moving forward has to sign up with my turn. And um so if somebody's interested, they can just email me and we'll give them the the information on how to do that. But it's, you know, it's going to require a certain level of um willingness to jump through the hoops, basically. Uh, if somebody is, we would love, the more people we can get doing this, the better. But what it's going to do is the pharmacy will be working directly with the state. They won't be coming through us. So right now, we're getting a lot of vaccine and then we redistribute it around the county. That's that's being eliminated as an option. And they're going to have to order to order directly from the state and put the data indirectly in. And if they don't do it the way they like it, they're going to be axed. So it's a, so, you know, if anybody that wants to do it, if they they should just go look on my turn. Or go through the CDPH website, but if they can't figure out how to do that, have them contact me and we'll we'll hook them up.
Perfect. And I know that Lake Pharmacy, they said you did reach out. They weren't prepared at the time to be able to do that level of uh service to their customers. Uh, but now they're ready to start moving forward and they're working on getting that. So hopefully they'll do the South Lake Pharmacy as well, uh, which is over in Hidden Valley. And uh maybe we can get some more because I think it's important to have as many possible sites. Uh, versus centralized sites, which make it difficult for some. We know that uh. Uh, mobility is an issue for many of our populations. So the closer we can get it to them, the better. Uh, just wanted to say that I'm really happy to hear about the governor's potential change. I know that I sent an email to Dr. Pace. I had advocated that they add the variable of how many people have been vaccinated. That it made no sense to continue in the tiered system with the new variable that was not being accounted for. Uh, especially since at the beginning, uh, we had like a forty percent positivity rate because we were basically testing people who were sick. Then we started testing a lot of people just to kind of check in and see where the virus was. Very much lower than our positivity rate, but I'm feeling that at one certain point, we'll go back to only testing those that are sick. Rather than continuing this level of uh testing because so many people are vaccinated, those people don't want to get tested any longer. Uh, so we have to figure out how to add that variable of the vaccination rate into the tiered system. Sounds like that's what the state is planning to do. Uh, I will reach out as well through my avenues that I've had that I feel has been. Uh, has positive results to try and make sure that our veteran and Indian health information is um collated with all the other information. That has been going through uh the other healthcare facilities that we have around the lake as well as public health. So that we can make sure that number is correct. Uh, the number thing is an issue for me. Because it it we we talked about the vaccination rates, but also um it's just the state has continuously had different numbers. Uh, than us. For instance, I go to CDPH, it says we've done forty-six thousand tests. I go to our public health, it says we've done twenty-six thousand tests. So uh un- unfortunately, there's a lot of data discrepancy between what we have and what they have. And we need to get to a better point where we can agree with what the state has. And if that the state tells us we can't go in a direction that we think we should go, that becomes a problem. And we need to make sure that we have something a little bit better. So I'll I'll work on those things with the state as well. And see if we can get more to an agreeable um status. Uh, I'm done with all of my comments. Thank you for letting me speak for such a long time. Any other comments from the board before I open it up for the public? Okay, Jake, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room and see if there's any public comments on our COVID-19 update from Dr. Pace.
All right, I sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Hi, it's Denise Pomeroy, the director here at the Health Department. I just, uh, Chair Savati, I just sent you the link for the providers that they can go online. If we want to get that posted in the chat or somewhere, um. That is the link that they can go and get all the information and sign up and everything. So just wanted to let you know. Thank you much.
Okay, anyone else have a public comment for this agenda item?
Hi, I'm Kimberly Eeler, E-H-L-E-R. And I had a few things, uh, questions I wrote down. And uh Department of Education, that's what I wrote down because and then you went right into uh the COVID. So why not allow separate cultural populations to privately count?
Hold on a second. Okay, I I gotta run. I'm in the supervisors meeting, so I gotta go.
I have a few things, actually. And this latest one, I have a question for that too. Which one do you want me to start with?
Go ahead and start with your first question.
Okay, why not separate cultural populations to privately count cases of COVID cases? Why not report to the health departments independently? In uh Indian slash tribal health is privately independent, not connected to any state or county. Interlocking algorithm, computer programs, privacy issues. Why not compare ratios independently so that we don't accidentally cause a disparity between different cultural people? And who, and when you're counting people that aren't from Lake County, are you also counting migrant farm workers who are hard to count? And um do they have a separate, like the tribal health or one entity? Do we have a a a section that is Hispanic entity as well?
Dr. Pace, would you like to respond to any of that? And I will just start off by saying that all of the numbers that we have are slightly imperfect. Because populations move all the time. Uh, they're based on on census data, which is again, an estimate a lot of times. Because it's been a long time since we finalized the previous census and the latest one from 2020 has not necessarily been fully updated and implemented. Um, so yes, it's very tough to know the exact numbers of our population, but we base it on what the best estimates are available to us.
I have a a little bit of advice. Now, the census information of twenty, oh, I'm sorry, honey.
Dr. Pace?
No, well, it sounds like she's got um a a point she's trying to make. Um, but I think overall, it's a good, a good suggestion that we are trying to separate things out. As uh so that we get a clear sense of which groups are having uh higher rates of infection. Or lower rates of vaccine so that we can try to really address that. Um, the migrant question is uh, we're just now at the point where some folks are coming in from out of the county now. To uh to be working in the in the different crops. And uh that's going to be a a whole different focus on how to how to help those people stay safe. And how to vaccinate them because, you know, I mean, the thing is, is you can't really separate people out. The way this, the way infectious disease like this works is if somebody's in the community that's infected, it it impacts everybody. And so if we're not taking care of certain segments of the population, it's going to impact everybody.
I have a question. May I interject while I can remember I have a little brain problem? Okay, the question is this. Now, the people that you want to vaccinate, the, you know, for the greater good of the community. The migrant farm workers, they're in a section, will they be um mandatorily vaccinated by the county health department in any way? Will they have a choice? Or are you going to start vaccinating people against their will?
There's no interest in vaccinating anybody against their will. There's no pressure to do that. Um, this is totally voluntary.
Okay, so when you're going in and you're counting the the people from like, I mean, that's going to be hard to count, actually, from the migrant farm workers. That was one of the hardest things on the census. A lot of things are a lot easier to count. And I just want to say, if you do want to look up the census, all the information is on the internet, what they got so far. And they've done a pretty accurate count to some despairing communities. I can tell that for sure. Now, I have one more question. I think that answers my question. I got enough to go on. You guys have a great day. And I I have another question. It doesn't relate though. I was kind of worried about Upper Lake.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to interrupt you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
For the rest of the public to ask questions.
Okay. Hey, guys, go ahead.
Oh, or not.
Um. Thank you. But I got appointment.
Jake, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room and see if there's any further public comment.
All right, I have sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, doesn't sound like there's anybody left in the Zoom room that has a public comment. And from what I saw, that other lady outside is leaving. If she comes back, Sam, let us know, please. Let's bring it back to the board. Any final comments before we get finished with this agenda item? Okay, Dr. Pace, thank you very much for everything that you're doing. And I know that those uh vaccine clinics are are looking well organized and quite busy. Uh, and I appreciate everybody's work in making that happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you.